Good afternoon. It's wonderful to be on your beautiful campus. And there's goodies out there in case you didn't notice. They look huge. The Board is always open to receiving comments. If anyone is interested in doing so, our procedure is you first have to fill out a comment card that you can get from Amanda. Remarks are limited to five minutes or 20 minutes for groups speaking on the same subject unless there's an emergency. No action will be taken at this time and any concerns that are raised are referred to Chancellor Carroll for follow-up. We have an item to read from closed session. Wait, where's your closed session item? Okay, thank you. All right, here we are. Under item 2A of the closed session agenda and a motion by trustee Zeeche seconded by trustee Reinerson, the Board approved the Title V administrative determination as a final district decision. The vote was five ayes. Okay, and this one comes at 7:03, right? Everyone has had a chance to review the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Are there any items? I'm sorry, is it? Oh, we go next to the campus meeting. Oh, that's right. Okay, now we're going to have our campus meeting next. So Chancellor Carroll?
Yes, Dr. Luster and everyone, here we are. The Board is very pleased to be at Mesa College. This particular meeting, for those of you who've not been to one before, is a regular Board meeting, but during the year, the Board visits each campus of the district to have what is called a campus meeting. And the purpose of that is really twofold. First, it's an opportunity for people in the, in this case, college community to see how business is conducted and how decisions are made at the highest level of governance in the district. It's also an opportunity for the Board to hear and members of the districts have to hear from you. What is it? What are your concerns? What are you proud of? Where are you going in terms of your future directions? So being onsite gives the Board and me the opportunity to really have a much closer interaction. These are hard to put together and many thanks to Dr. Luster, your president, Sarabeth Kane and the staff I knew bore a lot of the brunt of this. And we are very, very grateful to all of you for your hospitality and are looking forward to hearing the presentation that I know that you have for us this afternoon. So thank you very much.
I also have my secret. Okay.
We are Twitterholics, so there is the confession.
The first thing that we're going to ask you to do so that you can enjoy the presentation is we have the front row here reserved for you and you will find some packets and other kinds of things on the chair and then we will begin.
All right, well, thank you so much for everyone being here today. It's nice to see a full house and thank you to the Board for visiting with us today. We have an action-packed 59.59 minutes for you today, although Dr. Shabazz left, I think, 12 minutes on the table at City and so he wanted me to beat that record and I said, oh, to the contrary, I'm taking those 12 minutes. So nice try next time, Ricky. You know, if you go over, then I'll have to go less, but thank you for setting the bar for these meetings. So we are excited to tell you today that this year we set a thematic way of looking at things as a hashtag "All In For Students" and we're going to explore what that means for us here at Mesa College today and give you some examples of that. We have a couple of, a couple, we have many, many presenters for you, so I'm going to move through this quickly. What I'd like to do is remind you that this is my wonderful team, Dr. Hands, Mr. McGrath, and Dr. Agatha, I can say Dr. Agatha this year, are our vice presidents and our executive leadership team and I could not do this work without them and I really appreciate our team. We also have an incredible group of governance leaders and they've asked to all come up together rather than giving individual welcomes. So if we could have Kim and Trina and Joe come up?
Good late afternoon, everyone. On behalf of the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate, and the Associated Student Government, we want to welcome you to our campus today. We decided to come up here in unity to show you that participatory governance at Mesa is strong and thriving, not only between our groups and the administration, but amongst us as well. And so we wanted to kick off our festivities tonight by talking about the guided pathways that we're going to talk about and we wanted to share a brief moment of our hopes from each group with this work that we'll be embarking on. And so for the Academic Senate, we're hopeful that this work will infuse much-needed resources into our classrooms to improve our students' experiences there.
And for the Classified Senate, and based on rich conversations that we've had, we want to help promote self-actualizing student achievement. And our intention is to meaningfully participate as this huge group in the inquiry process and to help lead it in our way and to consider and frame our roles in this work as field professionals.
And from the Associated Students, we're extremely excited to see how guided pathways highlights the way for students to find their passions and find their confidence with what they'd like to do.
So without further ado, enjoy the show.
Alrighty, thank you very much for doing that. All right, so when we started looking at what we would be doing as a college for the Board meeting today, one of the things that we talked about was this assessment that we're currently doing of how the college is looking at its work in terms of guided pathways. So there are 14 areas that the state is asking us to look at to see where some of our work is already embedded. It gave us a nice framework because, as you can imagine, with a campus this size, we could be here all night highlighting some really wonderful things that are happening at Mesa, but we've decided to frame them under the pillars of pathways. And we're calling them Mesa Pathways for now until we decide if we're going to call it something else, it'll be a group effort, but really trying, this is a learning opportunity for us and we hope a learning opportunity for the Board as well. So there are four pathways and you would be hard pressed to miss them at this very moment because you actually see the pillars of the pathways right there in front of you. I'm told by the Chancellor that's no sort of official architectural pillar, but we went with it because it was pretty. So we apologize if the historical reference is off. And the first thing I'd like to do is introduce Dr. Hands, who will take us through clarifying the pathway.
Well, I read a quote that once said, "When the path ignites a soul, there is no remaining in place. The foot touches ground, but not for long." Mesa College has been igniting souls and clarifying pathways that lead to careers, that lead to higher education for a really long time. So we want to highlight three of those programs here today. And those three programs are San Diego Promise, our Placement Assistant, and our Career Education Pathways. So with that said, I would like to invite up Genevieve and Maya, and Tina Recalde, Danine Brown, and Monica Romero to help clarify the path.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Genevieve Visgara and I'm the outreach coordinator, assessment supervisor, and promise coordinator here at Mesa College. And I'm just going to go through these. All right. Over the last year and a half, I've been lucky enough to work with over 300 amazing and deserving students through our San Diego Promise program. Our two cohorts of students have received financial support in the term, in terms of class fees, book fees, health fees, but more importantly, they've been given dedicated and intentional support through counselors, peer navigators, and faculty and staff who are committed to seeing them make successful transitions to college, meaningful connections on campus, and eventually and successfully achieve and complete their academic goals. I could give you all kinds of data on the percentage of Promise students district-wide who've successfully completed their courses, their higher retention rates, or how the first cohort of Promise students at Mesa College, 60% of those achieved at least a 3.0 GPA after their first year. But I thought that I would bring a student with me, a Promise student from our first cohort, to tell you how the Promise has impacted her.
Excuse me. Hi, my name is Maya Wakefield. I am a second-year student here at Mesa College and I'm also a second-year Promise student, meaning I was in the first cohort, core cohort, sorry. So, and being in the Promise program allowed me to have one of the best journeys of my life here at Mesa College. I've been so fortunate to encounter so many great people here, people who actually care about me beyond my academic success, who care about my future, my personal future. A major reason I was able to experience these great things is because of Promise. I was able, Promise allows me to not have to worry about my basic academic needs such as books, health fees, tuition, and most importantly for me, a support group. Through Promise, I have all of that. I don't, without the Promise program, I wouldn't be able to accomplish the things I attended and accomplishing for myself. So with that being said, I am proud to say that I'm a full-time student here at Mesa. I take about 16 to 17 credits. I'm a double major. I'm also a U-Moja student, a student ambassador, a Promise student. And I've just recently been placed on the dean's honors list. So none of that would be possible if it wasn't for Promise giving me the support that I had, so thank you.
Thank you, Maya. And Maya is just one example of the types of students that we've been able to really help and support here through the Promise. And she's just one story and we have so many more, but thank you for speaking. I want to talk to you now about a new innovation that we have here, the innovative support of students and our efforts to streamline and clarify students' paths doesn't end with the Promise. On the screen, you'll see, and if I could get a, can you play it? Awesome. On the screen, you'll see how our students go through our online Placement Assistant. It was a tool that we adapted from best practices from other California community colleges which utilizes state guidelines regarding the use of multiple measures in the placement of students and that is rooted in the district-wide MMAP efforts and the work we here at Mesa have been doing to honor our students' capacity for learning and success. The Placement Assistant launched on July 17th in our assessment and testing office and since then, nearly 900 students have used it to generate placement levels and course recommendations in English and math. Students utilize self-reported student data in the Placement Assistant, such as high school graduation date, cumulative unweighted GPA, the last class taken and passed in English and math, and their intended major. And it has completely changed the way students experience assessment and placement here at Mesa College. Students who are eligible to use the Placement Assistant leave our office relieved. One, that they didn't have to sit through a two-hour test, and two, that they didn't have to defend their ability and their capability or to prove to us that they're competent and capable of placing into transfer-level math and English. The way the Placement Assistant has changed our students' experience, how our students' experience our college is remarkable, but equally remarkable is what preliminary data has shown since the Placement Assistant went live. Overall, 61% of students have been placed into transfer-level math coursework versus the 25% of students prior to the Placement Assistant going live. And 59% of students have placed directly into R5W5 and were recommended to English 101 or 105 as compared to the 25% of the students prior to the Placement Assistant going live. Additionally, the Placement Assistant has helped to significantly decrease equity gaps across all ethnic groups, with African-American students seeing the largest gains in both English and math. We are excited and encouraged by what the Placement Assistant has been able to do for our students and we can't wait to see the data on how successful they are at the end of the semester. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tina Recalde, Dean of Health Sciences and Public Service and formerly a Career Education faculty member. So at this time, I would like you to meet Cynthia. Cynthia arrived in the United States when she was three years old from Mexico. Her father worked in the fields and he used to take Cynthia and her sisters to the fields to show them how hard it was to work there and told them, "Do not end up here." This really motivated Cynthia. And then over time, she saw her father develop chronic back pain and she thought, "I need to do something to help my father." So she went on the internet and she started researching careers that she could go into to help her father and she found the world of physical therapy. Initially, she enrolled in Imperial Valley College, but what she found was it was really difficult to get into classes there and she didn't really know what classes she needed to reach her end goal. So she went back on the internet, did a lot more searching, and she found the Physical Therapist Assistant Program here at San Diego Mesa College. Then she had to do the hardest thing. She had to leave her family and come two hours away to attend our program. While she was here, she said what she valued most was her teachers because they actually listened to her and rather than telling her, "You're not good enough, you've made mistakes, you've made bad choices," they really focused on providing her with strategies and options so she could identify the best path to take to be successful. And then the two things that she had the most difficulty with was getting enough sleep and food. And she was lucky enough to find a family in the area that would support her while she was here and then she also worked full-time while going through school. And one of the things that helped her through this journey was this deep sense of community within the program. So the Physical Therapist Assistant Program is a cohort model. All the students take exactly the same courses together throughout the entire two years. And this really helps her because when people were struggling within the program, everyone would rally around them and they'd do study groups and they would help them to be successful. And then in their final semester, they do an interview where they have to go to a hiring manager in a clinic and they have to go through a job interview. And she just shared with me recently that she was very mad at me at the time for forcing her to do that, but it all worked out well because she was offered a job at the end of the interview and that's actually the clinic in which she works today. And she said one of the things that really helped her as she went through the program and prepared her for that was all the hands-on experience that she received because their very first semester, they actually start developing their hands-on skills and their second semester, they actually go out into clinics and observe therapists treating patients before they start their clinical practice. And what she was saying was when she was tired, didn't think she could do it, or just wanted to go home to her family, that thinking about those patients and that they needed her to be successful so she could get out there and help them, that motivated her to keep going and keep working. So kind of in summary, she was very self-motivated. She knew she didn't want to work in the fields, she wanted to help her father, and she had these patients who reinforced that she was on the right path. She was in a very highly structured program. And when we look at college success, we find that students overall have about a 56% success rate, but when we look at some of these cohort models, so in our dental assistant program, 71% success rate, our PTA program, 86% success rate, in our radiology technology program, 90% success rate. So these models actually work. And then there's a lot of faculty support. So in the allied health field specifically, every program has a program director, a director of clinical education. So those faculty meet with all the students regularly and what are you struggling with? What can we help you with? What support services do you need? And then they actually make sure that the students come onto the campus and get the support services that they need so that they're not lost in the system. Once again, they have that peer support because they're locked into a cohort of students, that work-based learning that kind of reinforces that they're on the right path and that this is the path they want to achieve. And then it teaches them those employability skills along the way. So I really want to kind of clarify that career education is a great way to get students into the field and I'd like to leave you with this quote from Cynthia. "Push yourself to be better than you were yesterday." Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tim McGrath, Vice President of Instruction, and I have the next path, Enter the Path. What we're going to cover today for Enter the Path are two areas, our Legacy Program, which is our concurrent enrollment, as well as our Cruise Program. One helps students find their path, the other helps students with their gateway courses be successful on their path. The first section is our dual enrollment and what I would like to do is to leave this room and go to the football stadium. Because if I brought the students that have been impacted by this program, they would fill half the football stadium. As I couldn't do that today, you just have to take that journey with me. But really to see the impact of this program, you'd need to experience 1,600 students sitting in the stands and the impact that it's had on them. Again, the program was created through an equity lens with the work Bernie that you did on AB 288 and the idea is preparing underrepresented students to be successful while they're in high school through the two gateway courses of math and English at the transfer level. The program for Legacy though, has not only impacted students involved in the program, it's also impacted greatly the students that are not in the program. Because every student that's in a Legacy program means they are not in one of the high school classes. So in effect, the Legacy program is a class-size reduction. So in the key gateway classes in the high school, we have helped the high school instructors work with at-risk students in their classes with a smaller class size. For the Mesa Legacy program, all of our classes are taught at our feeder high schools. To refresh you, your memory, the junior year, we do intermediate algebra in the fall, transfer-level math, either Math 116, which is college algebra, or stats. In the spring, their senior year, they do our accelerated English 47A, and then in the spring, they do English 101. Meaning when their Legacy students come to Mesa, their transfer-level math and English have been accomplished. And where students, probably about 30% of the students who go through the program who take 12 units, we are always chasing to get additional students because of the success rates. Now these students will take an additional 48 units here at Mesa because the gateway courses have been accomplished. You could see the sections that we offer, about 138 sections, and for Bonnie's sake, I wanted to let you know that the FTS that we've generated from our Legacy is about $1,008,000 in FTS. So it's made a significant difference for our bottom line. Now here is the 1,600 and so what I would like you to see is the two, two key numbers. The first one is the bottom, those are the students sitting in the football stadium. But if you look at the retention or the enrollment in the fall, 750, and spring, 491, you're wondering, what are we doing wrong? Why has the enrollment gone down? Well, it's the success of the program that's brought the enrollment down. Every December, Kearney High School graduates about 250 students that are part of the program and Anna, the principal at Kearney, locks those students across the street and hands them off to Pam because now they become Mesa students. So in effect, the real fruits of this program has allowed the Kearney Fast Track students who are part of the Legacy to enter Mesa in the spring of their senior year in high school. The other thing that's amazing, and these numbers, I will, hopefully you can see them, the dark number or the dark color is at the high school, the light color is here at Mesa. And every ethnic group that's involved in the Legacy program has been more successful on a high school campus than they here with a similar group here at Mesa. And you ask, why is that true? Well, the key ingredient here we have found is taking these courses in an environment where they are comfortable, they are safe, they have a surrounding which they know that they can be successful there, has proven to be successful in the, in the bottom line. And you also look at their GPA on the right, all of those are remarkable numbers and we are excited for each one of those students. Now when you take the next step, math is the huge roadblock for a number of students, but take a look at especially Math 96. On the high school campus, 74%, on the college campus, 56%. So those students coming here not only have completed the key gateway course of Math 96 and then the transfer-level math course as well, but if you look at the success rates, those are numbers that we, this entire campus, can be proud of. And I also have to give credit to the math department. They have been actively involved in working with the math faculty and Chris Sullivan is here. As an English faculty, we are working on one of the Board's priorities of aligning the curriculum with the high school and part of the work that's going on right now is doing that. You also can see the success rates on the English. They are equally amazing. 81% and 91% in English 101 and 85% in 105. This program has proven to be, I think Bernie, when you did your work, you hoped that the numbers would be similar here. Well, now they are and all of us can take great pride. The biggest issue we have is finding more instructors. The high schools are clamoring for more. We are working on tutoring and I'm anxious to come back and give you additional numbers as they go. You can leave the football stadium now, but before you do, shake hands with each one of those students because you've made a difference. Augustine?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present the Cruise and Peer Navigator Program. I am Usian Ribeda. I am the coordinator. Thanks. And I'm successful in English, too. So before we get started, I want to go ahead and invite everybody on our crew, so I'm going to ask you to get all your personal belongings and put on your life jackets as we get started here. So the Peer Navigator and Cruise Program is All In For Students. I take great privilege to introduce to you our lead Peer Navigator, Nashel Beayo, and also one of our other Peer Navigators, Margarita Gonzalez, who are going to guide us through the Peer Navigator and the Cruise Programs.
All right, excuse me, I'm really short, so I'm just going to like bring this down. All right, so I would like to talk to you guys about the Peer Navigator, like Augustine said. So all aboard the Mesa Cruise, right? Let me save this place. So all aboard the Mesa Cruise. Just to spice things a little. So I would like to talk about Cruise. Cruise is a program designed to help students transition into their first year of college. Cruise stands for Creating Rich, Unique Intellectual Student Experiences. And what does that mean? So basically, we help any student who's trying to come back to school. We have different sessions. We have our winter session, our summer, our summer session, and we have our Saturday session. Summer is usually for our non, summer is for our students who just graduated. We also serve veterans and we also serve our adult learners. We have a different session for them in the afternoon and their cruise is designed for them specifically. Now, and then the morning one is for high schoolers who just graduated. High school have taken about a year off. We also help international students. We mentor them for the first year and first year means... We mentor them for the first year, and first year meaning fall and spring, and it's free. So if you guys know anyone who's starting school, we did just open up our winter, it's free and they get food provided, which is really cool. And a little backstory, I actually started as a Cruise student. Fabiola was my Peer Navigator, and I followed her footsteps. Last year, I became a Peer Navigator, and this year, I was honored to become the lead Peer Navigator. And she was also a Peer Navigator, and she became the lead Peer Navigator last year. So it really has an impact on students, just like myself. And with that, I would like to talk about the Peer Navigators. So the Peer Navigators, we are the captains of the voyage. So our Peer Navigators are trying to better support our Cruise students, and we guide them to a successful transition into Mesa. And also, we are students. We are taking, we have to, we have to take 12 units. We need to be role models, you know, we need to have good grades, be involved in campus. And there's 12 Peer Navigators this year. And to describe their duties, I would like to present Marlena.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Neshal. So as a second-year Peer Navigator, my job and the job of the Peer Navigators is to contact our students. We have a variety of students ranging from 20 to maybe, or 20 to 60 students, and so we are in charge of them. And so what we do is we contact them, we try to make connections with them, we contact them via email, text, in-person meetings, or phone calls as well. And so we do all of that good stuff just to make that connection with them. Some of them do become personal connections, which is great because they tell us more things, and they'll text you and be like, oh, I got an A on my test. And so you're just like a really proud parent. And that's basically how most of us, Peer Navigators feel. And we also email the, email them events, whether it's the Career Fair or the Health Fair, and just different events going on on campus. We let them know that, we let them know of all of those events because they can benefit from them, and there's also free food there as well, most of the time. And so we do, one of our requirements is to meet with them at least once a month, and we feel like we need to do that just so we know that they're doing well in their first year here, making sure that they didn't go under 12 units if they need the 12 units for financial reasons. So we give them all that, all that information. So, so that's basically what we do in our overall goal, goal, excuse me, our overall goal, goal is so they can be successful here at Mesa. Okay. And during the three-day session, we do provide, we offer students a campus tour just so they can get familiar with the campus, so they know where the MS Building is, or where the SB Building is, or what classes are taken there, what classes aren't taken there, or where you can see your professors as well, and office hours, and how all that great stuff works. And thanks to our faculty, we are able to provide workshops such as counseling and English and math workshops as well. And we feel like those are intended to help students feel comfortable with meeting different counselors or math professors, English professors as well, just so they don't feel scared to go talk to them during their office hour. So thank you to all our faculty for helping us with that because I feel like it helps our students be, get out of their comfort zone and be able to talk to a professor. So, thank you. And to bring us back to port, Augustine?
Thank you, Marlena Neshal. Once again, the summer cruise, we welcomed over 500 students, and we continue to push the envelope to make sure that we can do innovative practices to better support our students. And like Neshal mentioned a little bit earlier, our winter cruise is now open for session, so please bring all your luggage and your belongings and meet us at the port. Thank you.
Augustine, I'm glad you spoke last because everything's set up right. Good afternoon. My name is Johanna Aliman, and I am with the Office of Student Success and Equity. Today, we've shown you how to clarify the paths for students and what the things we do to enter the, help students enter the path. And now, we are going to move on to show how Mesa is helping keep students on the paths to their educational success. I guess I'm in control. Okay. Here you can see some of the awesome and incredible programs offered at Mesa that help monitor the choices and progress of students in completing their educational goals. Tutoring, the LOFT Course Redesign Institute, the STAND, direct support, advocate, counseling hotspots, math�tics, and the STEM Center. The program I am getting to talk to you about today is one that's very dear, not just to my heart, but many of us here on campus, and that is the STAND. It's Mesa College's food pantry and professional clothing closet. With me today is my colleague, Claudia Estrada Howell. She's from the Transfer and Career Center. We are very fortunate to launch the STAND in the spring of 2017, where we received a proclamation of commendation from Councilmember Chris K for our dedicated service to students and the community. The community support helped us create media buzz around this equity initiative, and it is notable to mention that the STAND is run primarily through donations and the Mesa In the opening semester, we received over $7,000 in monetary donations in addition to clothing and food. The donations enabled us to provide service, services to 439 individual students. This semester, we have already serviced well over 500 students and are projected to exceed 600. Among the positive feedback we received after providing a survey to our students last semester was that the STAND helped them stay focused on schoolwork instead of hunger and inspired them to pay it forward.
And next, we would like you to join us in watching a quick clip on the STAND.
Welcome to STAND. My name is Joanda Jenkins. I'm a current worker at the STAND, a currently announced position, but I didn't always start off this way. How I got into the STAND is I was a student of Mesa and I got through the VA work system. And that gave me the opportunity to be a work, work-study, you know, student for the STAND. At the time, I didn't know that we were combating food insecurity on campus and how hard the problems that the students were struggling with actually not being able to get meals, you know, being hungry during test quizzes. And I thought that was just an excellent program to get involved with. I see all types of people day in and day out, and it can range from people just wanting to get snacks to people who are like basically, you know, providing themselves food for the whole week. The way the STAND works is that you, all you have to do is have your student ID, and we provide you with a point system, and from that point system, you will take access to our food. We also have clothes, and for that additional points, you can get clothes, professional dress clothes for business attire, business wear. And I've seen people come in and actually have an interview, get the job, and I was thankful that we were able to provide the services, such a quick thing. We even pulled people from other staff, from other offices to help tie ties for them, just to make sure that they had that first impression, and it was so exciting when they came up, and we asked them, did they get the job? And they're like, yes, I got the job. It was kind of amazing to see that kind of thing. I feel we provide a very safe environment for the STAND. We never go into anybody's personal finances and stuff. We provide instructions to go to the Equity Department, which can give them more resources since this is only a limited, kind of an emergency service. We also provide like food banks throughout San Diego County. We also get the 211 card, which also gives more information about food banks throughout San Diego County.
Students have been so excited to help with the STAND. In order for us to provide an additional avenue for students to pay it forward, we've partnered with an English instructor on a service learning project. The project provides students with the opportunity to learn more about food insecurity and ways to combat it here at Mesa College. We look forward to expanding on these efforts, along with the support of our Associated Student Government, our faculty, our classified staff, and administrators. We realize that the STAND is one of the few initiatives here at Mesa in the journey to help with providing basic needs to students. We are actively seeking new and innovative ways to collaborate, and we really look forward to where this is going and that next step to help our students stay on the path. Thank you.
I'm Letizia Lopez. I'm your Acting Program Manager for Hispanic Serving Institution Grants. And actually, what, what my colleagues here just finished saying really dovetails very nicely with what we've actually done with one of our Hispanic Serving Institution Grants, and that is the Seed Scholars Project. That was our very first HSI grant that we won, a USDA grant. And then after that, we won a Title V, Proyecto exito grant, that's on its last two years, and we are now on, working on year two of our Title III STEM Conexiones Grant. And I would have brought my students, but they are actually filling in for some others who are sick now in the STEM Center. So we have actually Lauren Ariola Sanchez here on this banner. And she has said it, saying, let the trustee know, please, that she's a winner. She has a job she loves. She works in the STEM Center now. And she's just filled with purpose. She says, I can now translate projects for us. She, she helps sign in students and helps with the tutor tracking system. So she's very thankful and has also spread the word about all the wonderful things that these HSI grants have, provide for students. So, but I shall focus on what we are working on now in our STEM Conexiones, and if you know me, I don't know how to present without handouts. So just a summary, a little show and tell about all the wonderful successes we've had with STEM Core students so far. As I said, we have just finished year one, we're on to year two. Now that we have our personnel hired, now that we're rocking and rolling, students are in love with us, still honeymoon period. Well, what can we do? What do we offer? We have about 20, 22 STEM tutors that, that work with us, both in the STEM Center and also in MT2C. So we're creating conexiones, connections. In many ways, we're creating student-to-student connections, student-to-faculty connections, also faculty connections with the multiple professional learning opportunities that, that are out there for them, and also pathway connections. So we've been able to hire a full-time STEM counselor, as well as a STEM pathways coordinator who's going out into the community, building connections with continuing education, as well as our high schools, strengthening the ties here with our Legacy Program, strengthening ties with STEM Core. So all around, we are rocking. And I'm just going to leave it at that because you have so much information here, so, and I just want to keep us on schedule. So, all right.
My name is Shadé Burrell. I'm here representing EOPS on behalf of the Director, Monica Demchow. I'm here to talk about Borderless Scholars. Borderless Scholars is a fairly new but very impactful program here at San Diego Mesa College. The purpose of Borderless Scholars is to serve our DACA and our undocumented students on campus. One of the things that we're doing here at Mesa College is we're providing them with multi-dimensional counseling services here. And when I say multi-dimensional, what I mean is that we are giving them above and beyond services, not just an educational plan to help them understand what classes they need to take care of campus, but we're also helping them with their families and providing their families with the resources, connecting them to some of the communities here that are also allies with our undocumented and our DACA students on, on campus. Also, we are building a community here, not only at, on campus, but also off-campus with some organizations that are dedicated to serving the population that we currently serve as well. In additional, we offer support to our students. About a year ago, we were, faculty members came together and we created a scholarship specifically for undocumented students because we noticed that there weren't scholarships that were able to meet the needs of those students who are undocumented. So like I said, faculty members came together and created that scholarship on campus. We're also working together with helping our students choose career paths that they want to go on, and also providing teamwork and collaborating with the mental health services here on campus, which is very, very important for us because, as you all may know, it can be extremely stressful to have to watch the news or Twitter and for you to see that unfortunate events are taking place, and you still have to go to class, and you still have to take a test, and you still have to write a paper. So we are definitely collaborating with our mental health services here at Mesa College. Lastly, I wanted to talk about DACA Advocacy Week. This is truly, to be honest with you, this is brought to you by these phenomenal students here on campus. We in no way take any credit for this. We instead give all the credit to the students. This is their event that they put on, that they felt needed to be held here on campus. And the purpose of it was for the voices of those students to be heard. And not only for the voices to be heard, but also so that they can supply, educate us on some of the issues that they're going through. So I'm going to let you hear from some of our students.
Good evening. My name is Victor Sánchez Edos, and I am a DACA student. This is my second year here at Mesa College, and I'm also a student athlete, so I play baseball here for Mesa. And I just want to thank the staff from the bottom of my heart for all the support you guys have showed us, for all the help. Honestly, without you guys, I wouldn't be here today. You guys have helped us through DACA when that happened, you know, just all the support you guys have showed. You guys open your doors. Every day, you guys ask us questions, especially me. You guys are like, hey, how's life going? How's school? How's your day so far? Do you need help with anything? You know, just questions like that are just what motivates me to keep going forward and just, just do the best that I can every day. Also, my coaches, they've been helping me as well. They're part of the staff, so honestly, I just want to thank the staff here, from teachers to the president to everybody that's sitting here in this chair. So thank you guys for all the help and support, and hopefully I can help you guys someday. Thank you.
I'm sorry, too, so I have to bring it down a little bit. So my name is Hornman Hewitt. I'm also a second-year student here at Mesa. I'm a math major, and I myself am a DACA student as well. And quick fact about me, I'm the first one in my family here in the United States to actually graduate high school and attend college. And that's a very big accomplishment for me since I have little cousins that look up to me, and they have other family members that have not attended college, but they have graduated high school. But they have, they can't look up to them because they don't know what college to go to. And the faculty here on campus, especially from the Borderless Scholars Program, being one student out of 25,000 students, then they be, them being able to say hi to us, I don't know, it just makes me feel really happy. It makes me feel recognized because I'm just one student out of 25,000 students. And that's every faculty member here on campus. Every time they see a student, they, they don't hesitate to go see the student if they're looking sad, if they're looking down. And that's exactly what's been happening with me. And I was just trying to not get emotional. But I just want to say a huge thank you as well. Thank you so much.
I wear many hats on campus. We all do. We're very busy students. You will see us walking around like, you know, I have to go to class, or I have a meeting, I have to do this. But honestly, at the end of, at the end of the day, I want to thank everyone, really everyone in this room, because there's days when we wake up and we don't know where we're going to be at. We don't know if, if we get stopped by a cop, if something happens. Our efforts, our work, our sweat, our grades, everything, won't matter at the end of the day. And knowing that you guys are here for us, knowing that you show up to everything we do, it makes the world so much easier for us. Although we don't have an answer, we know that if something were to happen, it would take a whole campus to let us go. So thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Neshal. That was beautiful. And all the students, all the Peer Navigators. So I am going to discuss ensure learning, and I'll invite my colleagues, Krista Stelmacher and Howard Esquie to follow some of the things that I'll discuss. I will discuss professional learning. My name is Janay Johnson, and I am the Professional Learning Coordinator here at Mesa. My team members are Eva Peril, Katie Palacios, and Todd Williamson. We are located in the LOFT. And unfortunately, I do not have a picture, but that is so, you can come up and visit us, so you can see it. So we're in the Learning Opportunities for Transformation, the LOFT for short. It's a collaborative space designed to foster a community of collaboration, support, and learning among faculty and staff through strategically planned professional learning activities. I want to thank the faculty members that shared their effective instructional practices in the discovery zone in the foyer, and I hope that you have the opportunity to learn about some of their great, the great things that they're doing to bridge equity gaps in their classes. Also, I wanted to say thank you to our President Pam and our Vice Presidents, Dr. Lust, I mean, Dr. Hands, I looked at Pam, sorry. Dr. Hands, Dr. McGrath, and Dr. Agatha for their amazing support, and I just appreciate Dr. Hands, Dr. McGrath, and Dr. Agatha for their amazing support, and I just appreciate all of them. So, I want to talk a little bit about our goals. So, in Redesigning America's Community Colleges, which is the book that discusses guided pathways, the authors recommend designing a plan that is strategic and supportive of educational professionals within their daily work. So, we define educational professionals as a collective group of Mesa employees that support the success of students in and outside of the classroom. So, with that said, how can we implement the professional learning that benefits the daily work of educational professionals at Mesa and helps students learn and thrive? So, the first thing is that we want to focus on learning. And what that means is that we shift fundamentally from making sure that the courses are just taught, but that they, that the students in fact actually learn. We focus on collaboration. We have a faculty professional learning committee, a campus employee learning committee, and a classified professional learning committee. And these committees act as a collaborative teams, and the work they do are the power sources of the professional learning community. We focus on results. Our collaborative teams will analyze data sources. In this way, the learning of the administrators, faculty, and staff enhances the learning of the students. And we also seek input through assessments and evaluations to learn about the needs of the Mesa campus. The Loft team will use this framework as a lens to design programs that are embedded in the work that instructors do. So, right now, we have four professional learning strands: technological awareness, personal and department development, culturally responsive teaching, and excellence in teaching and learning. Under each strand, I have highlighted some of the fantastic professional learning opportunities from 2017. So, if you are here at Mesa and you have not participated, make sure you come and check us out and see all the wonderful things that we're doing. So, some of the things, from Katie Palacios, she's done some great things under the technology awareness stand. We recently launched our badge program, our digital badge program. We have the award-winning New Faculty Institute that received the League of Innovation Award and was nominated for the Bellwether Award. We have the Teaching Men of Color workshops that are positively impacting our faculty and classified professionals from the Community College of Equity and Assessment Lab. And we have the Q, as well as Safe Zone Trainings. We also have the STEM Mentor Program, the Course Redesign Institute that we offer our faculty in the summer. And we have our Classicum, our three-day conference for classified professional, which has games, professional learning, and fun in June. President Lester's teams are the reigning champions, so...
Two years in a row.
So, we hope, we'll see what happens this June. So, in conclusion, as we serve our faculty and staff, our goal is to remain all-in for students. To chart our path and to ensure learning under each strand, we will work with campus constituents to review, number one, how well-defined learning outcomes are for academic programs; number two, how well are assessments or assignments closely aligned with learning outcomes; and number three, how well do program-level outcomes echo the skills and knowledge students need to succeed at a four-year institution or in the workplace? So, in closing, I just would like to share that, to ensure learning, we recognize that powerful professional learning begins with what we, what will really help students learn, what will engage those involved in assisting them to learn, and has an effect on the classroom. So, thank you for, for your time, and I would like to invite my colleague Krista. Thank you.
Okay. I'm still a little emotional over the bravery of our DACA students, but my name is Krista Stelmacher, newly hired Director of Resource Development for San Diego Mesa College and the San Diego Mesa College Foundation. It's a privilege and honor to be here. Thank you so much. I'm gonna keep this extremely brief because I want to leave as much room as possible for another one of our students, but as Janaye was explaining, one of the ways in which we, Mesa ensures learning is through innovation. The San Diego Mesa College Foundation supports those innovative approaches through mini-grants. Launched in 2014, we fund about seven projects a semester, and to date have funded nearly $40,000 in innovative projects, about roughly 50 innovative projects. So, here to tell you about a couple of those are Professor Esquieu and Professor Barry. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Howard Esquieu. I'm a professor of business, and I also have the privilege of sitting as a board member on the foundation. I luckily was one of the recipients of a mini-grant, and we've launched a Financial Literacy Speaker Series. This is a five-part speaker series that encompasses several different areas within financial literacy. Students get the opportunity to not only listen, but actually interact with these industry practitioners. And some of our community partners that play a role in this include San Diego Financial Literacy Center, California Coast Credit Union, The Wealth Group, and Financial Coach For You. We finished our last presentation today, and we, I'm proud to say that we've reached over 300 students within these five presentations. I have to share with you, it was a really kind of a moving experience today at the last one. One of the students come up and gave me a hug and told me that they were going home, and they've been working with their parents to create budgets in their household. So, that means our Mesa students are not only students, but they're educators, and they are change agents for their homes and their communities. We also have a partnership with California Burrito, and this enables us to serve many of lunches to many of our student population who are food insecure. So, on behalf of the school business, we are very thankful to Mesa Foundation for this opportunity to serve our students. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. I'm Don Berry, a geology professor. Okay, pop quiz. You ready? So, what do atoms, astronomy, archaeology, and alligators have in common, besides the obvious? So, these are all topics that we've discussed this semester in the STEM Lecture Series. So, we, we started this series in 2014. We were lucky enough to win one of the first mini-grants, and since then, we've become self-sustaining. We're really going strong. Our main goal in this series is to bring together STEM professionals and our students, and to really promote student engagement outside the classroom. The main reason I'm here tonight, though, is to introduce one of my students, a geology student, Isabella McIsaac, who is one of the most engaged and brilliant students I've ever met. Bella recently won Mesa's Research Conference, and she's since then gone on to present at the, at the national level. I think you'll agree when you hear Bella's story that she has, she has a compelling story to tell indeed. So, everybody, please welcome Isabella McIsaac.
Thank you for the kind introduction. As Professor Barry mentioned, I developed a research project surveying beach profiles at Torrey Pine State Beach, and I observed changes in beach morphology. But I'm here to tell you about my experience learning at Mesa. I began my research project with Professor Barry as my faculty mentor, and he helped me develop a project that combined both lab and fieldwork. He provided me with the equipment and resources I needed to conduct my research, and he was kind enough to assist me personally on my first day of fieldwork and then essentially let me loose. Then Professor Barry presented me with an opportunity to learn how to share my work through the Mesa College Research Conference, or the MCRC. Having never presented at a research conference before, I was very nervous. But by nature, the MCRC is a wonderful opportunity for students. It gave me a chance to see what it's like to prepare a research presentation and create a poster for the, the research conference here at Mesa. It was an inspiring, supportive environment where people seemed genuinely interested in what I had observed and what I had learned. Professor Barry then encouraged me to submit my proposal to the Geological Society of America for the chance to present at the annual meeting. The GSA Conference was an incredible opportunity to present among undergraduates, graduates, and professionals in Denver. Once again, I was nervous, but my experience at the MCRC had prepared me very well. I'd have never, ever thought that I could have an opportunity like this with only a 100 course under my belt. It was truly amazing to begin my geologic inquiry and be presenting my own research amongst professionals in under a year. The MCRC was the perfect preparation, not just for further conferences, but for my academic and scientific career in general. My curiosity and thirst for knowledge is endless, and I continue, I intend to continue performing research throughout my life. I am eternally grateful for my experience at the MCRC and all of the encouragement and support that I've had here at Mesa. Sometimes all it takes is another voice telling students, "You can," and assuring us that it's worth a try no matter what. Thank you.
Can we give all of our presenters a round of applause? Thank you. Now, every year, Beth makes sure there's tissues here, but they're up on the dais, and so we're gonna have to start putting them in the audience so that we can use them here. We've taken you on a fairly dazzling tour of what happens at Mesa College, and I think one of the things that we're realizing as we look at this work in pathways is, the work is going on here at the college every day in some amazing ways. And so, we're gonna finish off, we have, we have a bit of a surprise and a treat for you in just a moment. We have some students that are gonna actually perform some of their learning for you. But first, what I'd like to do is show you, this is one of the videos that we used at Convocation this year to talk about what it means to be all-in for students.
I'm a member of the football team. I play defensive end.
And I also play tight end here at Mesa.
Really, one point the teachers pointed across on me is that they're not gonna let you fall behind at all. They're gonna try to reach out to you at all hours of the day. And I felt like I was home at Mesa. I feel like it holds a higher standard when you're on the football team. You have to kind of be that role model for other students, I guess.
I knew Mesa was all-in for me because Coach McDonald and Coach Lockhouse here, you know, they were the ones that recruited me the most. And I just knew that if I went here, it'd be like the perfect place for me.
And I knew Mesa was in for me when I came here. I saw the tutoring centers. I saw the help with counselors provided. I saw how friendly all the teachers were, and the coaches, they had my best interest in mind the whole time, so.
I had been working at Mesa College for about three years now. I was previously a student ambassador, and now I'm a contract staff. When I was a student, I was lost, but then being a student here at Mesa and then being a student ambassador, it opened doors for me, and it made me establish relationships with different colleagues from different departments, and they demanded more from me than I did of myself. I took what I learned from those departments, and I relayed that into incoming and potential students. And now that I'm a contract staff, it made me want to be all-in for the students, just like Mesa was for me.
Mesa taught me that you didn't have to do it alone, so I was able to be connected to Johanna Alaman from Student Equity in creating the Stand, a food and professional clothing closet, food pantry. And that, you know, has helped students excel beyond the classroom. It helps with retention efforts. It helps us meet the students where they are. It helps us really provide a service that's above and beyond what we do here day-to-day for our students.
I am a student veteran here at Mesa. Before I enrolled at Mesa, I served in the Marine Corps for five years as a cryptologic linguist. And like a lot of student veterans, I faced challenges unique to our community. The time that I realized that Mesa was all-in for students actually had nothing to do with being a student veteran, and it had to do with me being transgender. I reached out to Dr. Michael Harrison. He's a Spanish professor here, and he's also the faculty advisor for the Mesa Gay-Straight Alliance. Instead of brushing me off or asking a lot of questions about my gender or what it meant to be transgender, he was a very, very knowledgeable, helpful ally. He already understood where I was coming from and the troubles I was facing, and he was able to help me solve those problems and find solutions. That's when I realized that Mesa isn't just all-in for some students. Mesa is all-in for all students.
And we now will have a, a live with students. Dr. Perrin is gonna bring the students in.
Today is resolution. This house is all-in for students. And now, please welcome your Prime Minister.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the board for being here today, to my opponent, the Mesa administrators, and all audience members. Today, we are arguing that Mesa College is all-in for students. For clarity, teachers are all-in for students. First, teachers focus on equity. Well, what does equity mean?
Good question.
This means closing achievement gaps by providing more access to success for underrepresented student groups. Mesa teachers accomplish this by attending professional development workshops, like teaching men of color. Therefore, Mesa faculty's equity focus assists in student education growth. Second, teachers promote academic excellence. Well, what does excellence mean? This is my show. By excellence, we mean that Mesa promotes a culture of open-mindedness that respects students' personal experiences and worldviews. So, in other words, you need both equity and excellence. As President Pam Luster said...
She's smart.
You can't have one without the other. And for these reasons, we believe that San Diego Mesa is in fact...
Hashtag.
...all-in for students. The problem with teachers is, what's a kid going to learn from someone who decides his best option in life was to become a teacher? It's true, they say about teachers, "Those who can do, and those who can't teach." I mean, you're a teacher, Taylor. Be honest. What do you make?
And I wish he hadn't asked me that. Ask me to be honest. Because you see, I have a policy about honesty, which is, if you ask for it, I have to let you have it. You wanna know what I make? I make kids work harder than they ever thought they could. I can make a C+ feel like a compression metal on. Yes. You wanna know what I make?
Tell us.
I make them question. I make them criticize.
Yes.
I make them apologize and mean it. I make them write, 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 and then I make them read. I make them realize that if you got this, then you follow this. Now, let me break it down for you so you know what I say is true. I make a difference. Now, what about you?
Thank you, Prime Minister. And now, let's welcome the opposition for their response.
Good afternoon, and thank you for today for being here, and thank you to the Prime Minister for letting us know how San Diego Mesa teachers are...
Hashtag.
...all-in for students. Now, your argument is compelling, but let's not forget the contributions made by students for students. First, students support each other through mentorship. Students who are new to Mesa College are offered guidance through our Peer Navigation Program. This is done through mentoring, monthly contact, workshops, and social events.
Yes.
This program showcases that Olympians cross the finish line together. Second, students stand together. Food insecurity impacts students every day, says President Pam Luster.
She's smart.
The Associated Student Government was one of the first campus entities to respond to this food insecurity for their peers, which eventually led to the creation of the Stand. Here, students have access to food, toiletries, and business attire. Clearly, Mesa students look out for each other, for even the most basic but essential needs. Therefore, students are all-in for students. Now, can I get a hashtag?
Hashtag.
Students, all for students.
Yeah.
Wait a minute here.
It's saying the Prime Minister is waiting for a rebuttal.
If I say teachers are all-in for students, and you say students are all-in for students, then who brings us together?
In case you haven't noticed, it has somehow become uncool to sound like you know what you're talking about. Declare sentences, so-called, because they used to like declare things to be true, okay? As opposed to other things that are like totally, you know, not. Like, don't think I'm uncool just because I've noticed this. This is just like the word on the street, you know? I have nothing personally invested in my own opinions, okay? What has happened to our conviction? Has society become so like totally, I mean absolutely, you know? And so, actually, our disarticulation is just a clever sort of thing to disguise the fact that we have become the most aggressively inarticulate generation to come along since, you know, a long, long time ago. I entreat you, I challenge you...
To speak with conviction.
...to say what you believe in a manner that speaks the determination with which you believe it.
Because contrary to the wisdom of the bumper sticker...
It is not enough these days to simply question authority. You have to speak with it too.
Who?
You.
Administrators?
You.
Staffs?
You.
Faculty?
You.
Students?
All of you.
Because of you, we stand together.
And declare that we create equity and excellence for all students.
Because?
We are Mesa!
I had not had the opportunity to see that, as you can well imagine. I cannot even tell you. Kim just said they were doing something special. That's all she said. So with that, that is the Mesa College presentation tonight. So thank you all very much, and we'd be happy to have you take your seats. So I know they've left the room. I don't know if they'll come back in the room, but just so you know that, as you could probably imagine, that was our speech and debate students. You probably figured that out.
We did.
Under the tutelage of Kim Perrigo, Brian Malinas, Scott Planback, and Dawson, I can't remember Dawson's last name, Nugent, Dawson Nugent.
That was very, very, very impactful and impressive, especially hearing from the students. Do we have any comments or questions from the board?
Ed, Pam Luster.
She's smart!
That's going to foul you, kiddo. Yes, Bernie.
I'm almost speechless, but as... I said almost, Rich. That was just so powerful, Pam and everybody from Mesa who played a role in that. It really meant a lot to me personally, and I'm sure to all of my colleagues. But as you were going along, I was writing down questions, you know? So I have questions. Do you have answers?
Of course.
Okay. So I'm just going to read off a few questions, and maybe Pam, you can kind of help. Are peer navigators paid? Was this, was this the first-year placement assistance was ever used?
We started placements this in July of '17, so this was the first semester.
Okay. All of these things are cool, like peer navigators were really cool. I just wondered if they were student workers and were they paid? How do students get points for the Stand? This flyer is really great. I took a picture of it to be on my Facebook, but all those points, how do students get those points and what do they worth?
So the reason that the point system is in place, and I will use the microphone for it. The reason that the point system is in place is because we know that coming into the pantry takes a lot of effort for just someone to come in and say that they need help. And so when students start to come in often, we notice that they are using their points. So there's a certain amount of points for different kinds of foods or something like that. And what happens is that as a student starts to gather points, what we can do is confidentially let them know that we actually have even more services.
How do they get points to begin with?
So there are a number of points that, right, so you automatically get points. I mean, there's just a point.
You get a bunch of points.
Yeah, yeah. So there's an automatic number of points. But we did that intentionally, and I should let the ladies talk for themselves. We did that so that we could step up the support because we also then can talk to students who might need bus passes, who might need prank cards. We might be able to give them meal cards because their needs aren't just a onesie-twosie kind of thing. They really can't feed themselves in a sustainable manner. So that's why the points, it's actually so that we can get even more intrusive to try to help students.
Okay. And on the STEM Conexiones, Letitia, if you're still here, how many stu-, I didn't hear how many students were being served in that program and maybe some of the demographics of the students?
So we can get those for you. I don't know that I have, is the lady still here or did she go back to the STEM Center? Probably back in the STEM Center. I don't have those, there are various pieces of the STEM Conexiones grant, but we can get that. We just literally opened the STEM Center six, eight weeks ago.
Okay.
So students have just started using it. It's in our Learning Resource Center.
And the last question on my list, the other cool thing were the mini-grants for innovation. Very, very cool. How much are those grants? Do professors apply for them, and how much do they get? And what's a typical mini-grant?
Right. So you can apply for up to $1,500. We do it, we're doing it twice a year right now, but you can do for up to $1,500. And the preference on the part of the foundation board is that these are generative kinds of grants so that you can get something going and then be able to, as Dawn said, they're now self-sustaining in terms of the speaker series. There are a couple of mini-grants that were so special that the foundation took them on on a permanent basis. One of them is funding the marine biology trip. One is the financial literacy series, and I believe we are sustaining this speaker series. So some of them are so impactful, we're getting hundreds of people to them, that the foundation continues to support them. We just went through our mini-grant process. I can't, they haven't been announced, I would, I know who they are, but some really wonderful new projects will be funded this semester.
That's really great. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions?
No, just a comment. You know, coming to Mesa always feels a little bit like, like being at home, possibly because Pam has stolen so many people from Quimaca College. You know?
Most recently, our new dean of exercise.
Yes, I am aware. It was lovely to catch up with him, you know, but also, also old friends, you know, Chris Sullivan and I went to grad school together, and I like to taunt his students by telling them I know things. Anyway, it's always wonderful to be here. This was an incredible presentation. Mesa is clearly all-in. And I will also say that there is something amazing about the friendly competition among the presidents, trying to outdo one another in these presentations. And it is, it is much to our benefit that that is the case. But you are all a credit to your profession. It's been a joy and a pleasure to watch all the hard work. I'm tired just having looked at that. Thank you.
I have one question. The hotspot counseling.
Yeah!
Where does that happen?
So I could give you the obvious answer. We created spots on campus where students are. So it started as a pilot project with Chicano Studies and Black Studies where Judy Sandayo, Guillermo Marujo, were going out and meeting with students at other faculties' offices and just, you know, that's where our students are, and that's where we're going to take counseling. We're now doing it in exercise science for our athletes. We're doing it in this, our STEM Conexiones counselor is actually in the STEM Center where the students are, and she does hotspot counseling right in the STEM Center. So we're taking it to where the students are, and the counseling department's been fantastic.
That is such a great thing to be doing, and it's something that I've always thought counselors should do, that they shouldn't stay in their offices, that they needed to be visible and interactive and in classrooms and every place else. And ah, I'm so impressed that you're doing it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'm sure we could keep going, but I think we need a break. And, and thank you to all of you who are here for this meeting. You're welcome to stay for the regular board meeting. Some of you I know will, but others of you probably won't have to.
It'll be fascinating.
It will be. Absolutely. Fascinating. But we will take a five-minute break. Thank you.